May I have a motion please, the commander of executives? Ms. Shields, Mrs. Cherigo. Please rise to the microphone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. And this night is a bittersweet one for lots of reasons. But I don't want to steal the thunder, so I'm going to turn the meeting right over to Dr. Malo.
If it's okay with you, Mr. Malo, I'll just... I have a very short report tonight, which I could give now, and then we could give our presentation, if you don't mind me going out of order.
You're the boss.
Good evening. I am pleased tonight to share an important recommendation for appointment to our district leadership team. Mr. Brian Rollins is being recommended for the vice principal position tonight of Copley Middle School. He brings extensive background as a middle school teacher and a district supervisor, and I am confident that Mr. Rollins will positively compliment Mr. Ganellos' leadership team, together with Ms. Wintus Wistnewski. I would like to congratulate our teachers, our staff assistants, our support staff, and our administrators for all their efforts this year, and for always making our children their number-one priority. Tonight, we have the occasion to honor those individuals who have dedicated a career to the Rockaway Township community and touched the lives of so many students. We know that the best programs and the finest curriculum cannot compare to the impact of a caring and dedicated educator. And on behalf of our district, I extend my sincere thanks to all our district staff, and in a very special way tonight, to those who will be retiring at the conclusion of the school year. And with that being said, I would like all our district administrators who are present tonight, if they could come up forward so that we can together acknowledge those who will be honored this evening. So as we announce each name, if those present could come forward, receive a token of our appreciation, and just to take the mystery out of what's in the wrapping, you really don't have to watch the clock after tonight, but in case you want to, it's a nice way of remembering those who are still on the clock. I guess that's the best way of putting it. And after you receive that, we'd ask you if you could just kind of go through our line of those who'd like to congratulate you for what work you've done here in the community.
Well, mine's not long enough.
I'd like to begin with Patricia Kaplan, Stony Brook Resource Center teacher, 15 years in the district. Louis Carmona, custodian, Copley Middle School, 17 years in the district. Wanda Jenkins, secretary and sports specialist, Central Office, 20 years in the district. Deborah Rogers, child study team secretary, Central Office, 17 years in the district. Mary Kay Mulligan, bus driver, Transportation Department, 25 years in the district. Oh, you can't sit down, Ms. Wistnewski. You have to come up here. We'll watch them. In Lam, psychologist, Copley Middle School, 19 years in the district. Robin Williams, science teacher, Copley Middle School, 24 years. Melinda Shavonik, bus driver, Transportation, 29 years in the district. Roger McKeon, bus driver, Transportation, 10 years in the district. Helen Natalee, student assistant, Copley Middle School, 25 years in the district. Kathleen Bradley, student assistant, Stony Brook School, 16 years in the district. Diane Martone, student assistant, Stony Brook School, 13 years in the district. Rosemary Muscolino, secretary, Stony Brook School, 29 years in the district. Rosemary Radom, multiple disabilities teacher, KDM School, 26 years in the district. Celia Alme, student assistant, Stony Brook School, 20 years in the district. I think Stony Brook School's losing all pictures. Linda Thompson, student assistant, Stony Brook School, 8 years in the district. Martha Hesling, specialized teacher, Choir School, 35 years in the district. Donna Friedberger, academic intervention, Choir School, 13 years in the district. Donna Zerkel, Resource Center teacher, KDM School, 20 years in the district. And we're going to all remain up here, but I'm going to turn the mic over to Ms. Bloom, who's going to present some very special awards to our Transportation Department.
Good evening, thank you for coming. Well, we're going to start with what makes a bus driver a safe driver. A driver who knows their students they transport, the roads they travel, the stops they make. The safe driver's certificate requires the following requirements: Year of safe driving with no accidents, all paperwork in order, and passing a written test. That in itself is a feat, but when you add that our Rockaway Township drivers are the shoe tires, the nose wipers, the good mornings, the good nights, and the start of every Child's Day in Rockaway Township, and some of them doing it since these children went to kindergarten and graduated with them in eighth grade, it's an amazing feat. We are here to honor those drivers tonight that have accomplished every single one of those feats that are not easy, believe me, you. The first award will go to Patrick Andrews. Lisa Fisher. Diane Boykow. Noreen Paradini. Christine Elston. Ryan Fisher. Ruth Foster. Pamela Cratchit. Beth Pearson. We have part of you people who are not able to attend tonight.
To take a short 10-minute recess, we have refreshed some cookies on the side and some interesting water selections for you. So please stay, and we'll resume our meeting in a few minutes.
I'm God. My God.
I didn't see him.
Yeah, he's there. He's at the high press.
And Jay's first for Dyson.
Oh, he's going to the diner.
Blocktel, dog.
I definitely got him.
Yeah, I would love to.
I want him.
Atlantic City, that's where he lives.
Get out of here.
I definitely want him.
Yeah, I want him to get out because I'm now...
Oh, my God, I would be happy.
All right, yeah, I'll see you.
Is it okay to walk out the door?
I paid your promise to a close by the private house. The board members are going to break the pact.
I used to go, but I'm like... Checking them things and going to the market and then I get involved. But never needed to call me.
I will. I definitely will. Good seeing you.
We need to have more meetings like this. I don't mean more retirements. I mean just upbeat, because it's real, it's a real pleasure. So it is bittersweet, but certainly wish everyone well in their retirement and thank everybody for their service. At this time, moving on to the public discussion. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals to take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming, if and when appropriate. The board asks the members of the public to be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. May I have a motion, please, to open to the public?
So move.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Hellwork. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Please.
Patrick Diel, Leonard Valley Road. I'd like to express my thanks to Mrs. DeCarlo. As you've known from past meetings, I have a lot of inquiry back at the buses, and I have sent emails to Mrs. DeCarlo, and I'd like to thank her for her promises in getting back to me. I still have some questions, but I will give you a call and then we can talk about them. All right?
It's going to be a call, right?
Thank you very much. I do have comments about a couple of policies. Should I wait till those policies come up?
Yes, we will open up to the public at policy time. Not prompt. Thank you, Mr. Diel. Anyone else? If not, may I have a motion, please, to close to the public?
So move.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Moving on now to communications. Has there been any additional communication?
No, there is nothing.
Thank you very much. Moving on to approve the minutes of May 22, 2019. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Mrs. Shields? Mrs. Brooks, second. Any board discussion on the minutes? If not... If not, roll call, please. Mrs. Brooks? Yes. Mrs. Chirico? Yes. Mrs. Hellborg? Osteen. Mrs. Mezick? Yes. Mrs. Shields? Yes. Mrs. Smith? Yes. Motion passes. Moving on to superintendent's report. Is there something else you'd like to report on? You've completed your report. Then we will now move on then to the business administrator's report. Mrs. DeCarlo.
Good evening. The National Association of State Directors of Public Transportation Services requested that school districts participate in a survey that would report illegal passing incidents as reported by the bus drivers. The State Commissioner of Education supported this initiative and asked that New Jersey school districts participate in the survey. The date to record illegal passing of school buses was May 21, 2019. Rockaway Township had 32 drivers participate. Out of these 32 surveys, 19 illegal passings were reported. Some buses had no issues and some had multiple issues. There were 12 reported for the AM routes, two at midday, and seven during the PM routes. The majority of the illegal passings, 17 of them, were ones in which the car was coming from the opposite direction and did not stop when the red lights were flashing. To call this disturbing is an understatement and it reinforces the district's belief that we get all buses installed with cameras, the sooner the better. I have given the go-ahead to our transportation supervisor to obtain quotes so that we may purchase additional cameras this year to speed up the process of reaching our goal to have all buses equipped with stop-on cameras. We have been approached by Long Hill Township to join our Title III Consortium for Federal Grant Money. We currently administer these grants for Rockaway Borough, Morris Plains, and Denver. School districts typically join together when their grant money is less than $10,000, which would otherwise prevent them from receiving their grant. You will notice on tonight's agenda that we are approving the lunch prices for the 2019-2020 school year. These prices are remaining the same as the current year. There will be no increase. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. DeCarlo? I do have one. Were all of those incidents with people illegally passing the bus reported to the police?
No, they were not.
Normally, do we do that, or is there a way that we can ensure that that happens?
Well, with the stop-on cameras, we would have a chance to get the license plate. Without the cameras, we can't always ensure that the driver's going to be able to catch the thing.
For those buses that seem to have more incidents than others, is there a way to alert the police that there seems to be perhaps more incidents with that bus and has someone there in that area?
Mrs. Bloom, on occasion, has asked to have officers stationed around town because there are certain roads that... Green Pond Road, for instance, is a problem. People have been out there getting on the buses. So, there have been officers, and I see them myself because I come across Green Pond Road. So, I do see them on the side of the road.
But I'm concerned, for instance, that one day where you said some buses had multiple incidents. To me, that's a red flag that perhaps the police could help us and at least monitor those areas, just to see.
I will talk to Mrs. Bloom tomorrow. I'll check into those rounds and make sure that they put somebody's stops.
Thank you. I won't ask you where the stops were, but I trust you. Okay, moving on then to the curriculum report.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Rockaway Township. I would like to begin my report tonight by thanking all of the teachers that joined me for a school visit to Stony Lane Elementary School Paramus on June 4. Stony Lane is about nine years into their implementation of a balanced literacy program. And during the visit, our teachers observed classrooms and spent a lot of time debriefing with their principal, Tom Marshall. In total, we spent three hours immersed in the Stony Lane community and left with a deeper understanding about how the implementation of balanced literacy truly is a multi-year process and requires ongoing professional development and reflection to truly implement a culture of literacy where reading and writing become habits of mind. As a follow-up to the visit, all of the teachers will be meeting with their principals to share their reflections about the experience, and I will follow up with the principals to determine how these reflections will inform our ongoing planning. I'm pleased to report our 5th grade math teachers are making a lot of progress toward identifying two math programs to pilot during the 19-19 and 20 school year. These teachers have participated in two in-person planning meetings as well as several virtual collaborations. Several of us also visited Merriman Avenue School in Newton where they have recently implemented Eureka Math. This visit was very informative and our teachers spent time with the principal, math specialist, and several teachers of the school. I believe we will be prepared to announce our two top choices at the June 26 board meeting. I'm excited to share, our inordinate instrument test drive night for all 3rd graders in the district was an overwhelming success. We had 118 families attend the event. All district music teachers as well as alumni and 8th grade volunteers worked together to make this event happen. We are extremely grateful to the music gym for providing all the instruments and supplies. And I would like to thank Joey Odessa for her leadership in pulling this event together. In closing, tonight's agenda includes the adoption of the first two units of our new reading curriculum for the 1920 school year for grades K through 5. These units are designed to be used alongside the Reader's Workshop units of study. These units include a pacing guide for each grade level and guidance for how and when to administer service assessments. In September, we will provide our teachers with more guidance about when to administer the DRA-2 and occasional assessments as part of our new universal screening protocols. In the meantime, an email will be sent out to all elementary teachers tomorrow from their grade group facilitator with detailed instructions for how teachers should begin to learn this new curriculum. To our elementary teachers, please be on the lookout for this email and please reach out to your grade group facilitator or me with any questions. The adoption of these first two units is an important next step in our journey together toward the implementation of a balanced literacy program in all our elementary schools. I thank our board for their support and I acknowledge and appreciate our teachers for their commitment to learning this new approach to elementary literacy instruction and assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Navian?
I just wanted to say that my son and I had the pleasure of attending that instrument test drive and it was really a wonderful experience. He came here having no interest in playing an instrument and then left challenged between which five, you know, he had five top instruments that he wanted to play. So, we really appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? If not, moving on then to committee reports. Mrs. Brooks?
Nothing too exciting. Mrs. DeCarlo touched on most of it. Yesterday, we had an operations mini-meeting. Last evening, myself, Mrs. Shields, Mrs. Chirico. We just talked pretty much about closing the school year, those types of things, potential enrollment for next year, facility usage, that type of stuff. So, very exciting. As soon as they close, they're finding ways to reopen. I commend the facilities department, right?
For sure. Any other committee report? Mrs. Hellborg, education.
First, I'd like to just recommend the units for the reading curriculum that's on the agenda for everyone from the committee. We had a...
Close it.
We had a wonderful presentation from Mr. Scott Buckley. He talked about the catalyst program that he's using for mainly the ADA data in order to collect that for the students. And this is definitely a learning experience for me because I didn't understand the program in itself. So, we had in-depth explaining of how they put together the skills, how they're assessed. This program that they're using, there's real-time access to it, which was wonderful for the payers. So, if it's in another school and the information is being inputted in one place, he was able to have an immediate connection to the data and make recommendations. And I know that they have more that they want to build on with this, but it's building a library of skills and so everyone has access for it, the teacher, the administrators, to the data of the ADA. And it's this wonderful presentation for them. And we also talked further on the curriculum that we adopted to see if we can expand upon it. But thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Hellborg? If not, Mrs. Smith?
As the policy committee chair, we had a meeting, which was last night, on the 11th. We had a very robust agenda. One thing that did not make to our agenda was Mrs. Chirico had the last evening, Policy 8320. Personnel, would you want to speak to that?
Yes. I did ask the personnel committee to delay that because I knew that we were going to have some additional discussion based on some advice from our attorney, so I thought that it was premature for us to address that policy. So, that will be on a policy.
And we'll come back to you later in the meeting. And Mr. Diel, that'll be your chance as well, so I haven't forgotten you. Any other committee reports? In terms of bus driver negotiations, as reported, we did declare an impasse. We've been waiting for a mediator to be assigned to us. Recently, our attorney did try to nudge the state. The state is yet to assign a mediator to us. And so, we're anxiously awaiting that assignment so we can get some dates and move forward with that. And Mrs. Hellborg?
I forgot to ask, we need to set up a curriculum meeting for this month. Is possibility for the date for our next meeting, which is June 25th, in the evening? I'm not sure availability.
I would only be available after 7 o'clock.
I'm available around 6, around 6.
So, if you want to hold in, I don't know if Mrs. Mezick is my alternate contender, it's fine.
Maybe 25th, if it's extended.
Actually, one more thing. They could have another policy meeting, or no?
Why don't I serve the policy committee?
Okay.
Which will probably be your update. We are up to date, I'm not sure I'll estimate, updates. I want to thank the committee for shaping on such a robust agenda. We had 25 policies.
It was a real paper.
Policy committee is as robust as putting up lightning, so it truly is. But we thank you for all of your effort. With that then, we move on to recommended for board action. First section is personnel. It begins on page 4, it ends on page 8 with item 29. There'll be no public discussion for this. All discussion was held in executive session as per law. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Roll call, please. Mrs. Brooks? Yes. Mrs. Chirico? Yes. Mrs. Hellborg? Yes. Mrs. Mezick? Yes. Mrs. Shields? Yes. Mrs. Souney? Yes, motion passes. Moving on to HIV determination, beginning on page 8 and ending on page 9. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields? Board discussion?
As in front of the board tonight is a vote on HIV number 32. And then in executive, which is an unconfirmed HIV. And in executive session prior to our meeting tonight, we discussed HIV number 33, which is also unconfirmed and which will be voted on at the June 26 meeting.
So, we're voting right now to affirm HIV case number 32 as unconfirmed. May I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to D, special education, beginning on page 10, ending on page 11. May I have a motion, please? Mrs. Chirico?
Second.
Mrs. Shields?
Mrs. Souney, if anything, a motion to separate out number 7 and 8.
Motion on the table to separate out number 7 and 8. Second, Mrs. Chirico. Mrs. Hellborg, Mrs. Chirico. Board discussion. If not, I can open to the public? Alright, then we'll ask for a roll call. The first roll call will be for items number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 9, 10, and 11. Roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborg?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney? Yes. Motion passes. And may I have a motion to bring back number 7 and 8?
So moved.
Mrs. Shields and Mrs. Brooks. Roll call for 7 and 8. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborg?
Osteen.
So noted. Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney? Yes. Motion for 7 and 8 passes. Moving on to E, administration, beginning on page 12, ending on page 12. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Chirico?
Second.
Before we continue, I do have a walk-in. It'll be number 6 on page 12. Under administration, motion to approve submission of the comprehensive equity plan for school year 2019-2020 to the New Jersey Department of Education. So, that will now be included under administration. Board discussion. I'll make a comment then about number 5, the dedication. This was, we tried to keep this as surprised as possible, and I think we pulled it off for the most part. The Board of Education, working hand-to-hand with the RTEA, wanted to honor the memory and the true commitment and dedication of Mr. Tim Bassett, who was one of the original people involved in our municipal alliance committee, our substance abuse committee, rather, I stand corrected, substance abuse committee, and our drug education program here at Copeland. He passed away in December and it was a terrible, terrible loss for everyone here at Copeland and for his family. In his honor, we decided that it was time that the new gym, which people don't even know which one's new and which one's old anymore, the new gym which was built in 2000 really isn't the new gym anymore because it's not new. And what better way to honor the legacy of Mr. Tim Bassett than to name the gym for Tim Bassett? And so, from that day forth, the new gym is now officially called Bassett Hall in memory and in honor of Tim Bassett. In addition, the board, working with the RTEA, created an award that will go to a community member who has dedicated himself or herself to our children, committed to helping our children make positive choices. And we called it the Pioneer Positivity Award because that's what Tim Bassett always talked about. This award, the plaque, is now going to be sitting outside. I don't know if it's been hung yet, but it has been hung yet. It is sitting outside Bassett Hall, which is down the hall. And every year will be awarded to a member of the community at the annual breakfast that's held, usually the last week of May. and honoring the legacy of Tim Bassett. He also was a keynote speaker to our staff. I want to say about three years ago, two years ago, his message to students was so touching. At the time, Dr. McGann decided that, what a wonderful keynote speaker for the staff. And the staff still talks about what Tim had to say. So that's what number five, number five is all about on page 12. I can open to the public if anyone wishes to make a comment? If not, may I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborg?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Soundney? Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Finance, beginning on page 13, ending on page 13. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields? Board discussion?
Mrs. Soundney, may I please make the motion to separate out number one, under Finance and under Travel, as it involves me attending worship?
Okay, number one, may I have seven, please?
Second.
Second, okay. Mrs. Shields? Any more discussion? Any public discussion? If not, we'll be voting on number two only for the first roll call. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborg?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Soundney? Yes, motion passes. And motion, please, to bring back number one.
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Chirico? Roll call on number one. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborg?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
I am staying.
So noted. Mrs. Soundney? Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Policy, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields? Board discussion? Mrs. Messick, would you want to turn it over to you first?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, on tonight's agenda, policies for a first read are Policy 3362 Sexual Abortion, Policy 3425.1 Modified Duty Early Return to Work Program for Teaching Staff Members, Policy 3431 Uncompensated Lead, and Policy 4425.1 Modified Duty Early Return to Work Program goes towards that number. Any questions for this before? The second motion is to approve the following policies for a second read. Policy 5330.04 Administering An opioid Anecdote, Policy 5337 Service Animals, Policy 5756 Transgender Students, Policy 4432 Signal You.
There's been no changes in any of that since the first read. Okay, thank you. More questions?
Hi, Paulson. I had a, it's like kind of a random question. So the modified, what is it, Policy 3425.1.1? So some of them on the top, say page one of two, look like the policy was consolidated to one page. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so on the, when it popularized on the website, it was on one page.
That's so technological. The thought policy. But thanks for remembering first second page if it didn't exist. No problem. And the other board discussion?
I just have one question. On 3431, on the second page, the sentence, whenever possible, an uncompensated lead of absence will be planned for a time certain. Is the third paragraph from the end? For a sentence, right? For a time certain?
For a certain period. I would attribute that to be a defined period of time. These are not written by literary folks.
Oh, I know it.
Written by people like Mr. Grace.
I'm just saying. We try to make it understandable. It's the same, it certainly is. It's less words, Mrs. Chirico. Okay. Any other questions about the content of the policies? If not, I can open to the public. May I have a motion, please? Mrs. Messick and Mrs. Hellborg was a second. Mr. Deo, please.
Do I have to announce my name and address again?
I think I have it, but for the record, yes.
I'm Dr. Deo, 11 Valley Road.
Thank you, sir.
These are two policies I'd like to comment on. The first one is 5756 Transgender Students. I have a couple of questions before I make my comments. I had to read that policy several times. Nine pages long, with some legalese in it and a lot of other stuff. So my first question is, who is the actual author of that policy?
Yeah. Well, I think, I want to, one piece to you, Dr. Deo, and I know we do respond many times, but this is a time for public comment rather than a dialogue. So if you have some questions, we can listen to them. Some we may be able to respond to, some we may not be able to. But if you could just make your statement, and then if there are things we can respond to, we will.
Not a problem, appreciate that. All right, so with that, I have a, that's my question. Who is the actual author of that policy? How much input do the board members and parents have into the drafting of that policy statement? And then who is the, who is responsible for interpreting federal and state statutes that are dictating that this board have the extensive policy that's being presented here tonight for a second reading for a pool? With respect to my comments, first of all, I'm deeply concerned that the policy is excluding parents. Parents have a legal responsibility for the support financially and emotionally of children up till the age of 18 in New Jersey. But yet this policy is excluding parents with respect to the policy statement. Very concerned about that. Because the parents do have this responsibility. And if anything goes amok, the parents are the ones that are responsible. I may add that the parents are morally obligated in many respects for the well-being of their children. I know that there are situations where that doesn't occur. But for the vast number of parents in this community, they're well dedicated to the upbringing of their children. Since when is it the right of the government, including this Board of Education, to usurp, usurp the rights of parents to raise their children and instill in them views, values, and morals? The Board is considering a policy dealing with children, for the most part, raging in the age of five to 14, which we all know are formative years, years where there's much influence on the children, both from adults as well as their peers. This policy is allowing teachers and administrators to step into the shoes of parents without the knowledge or input of the parents. Yet these parents are the ones who ultimately are responsible for the well-being and actions of their children until their age of 18. I do recognize that there are individuals who question their sexuality, but their behavior should not put a financial or emotional impact on others. This policy allows children, again, in an age group of five to 14, to choose what bathroom or what locker room, what facilities to use, again, without parent involvement or consideration of the impact on other students. I do understand that individuals express themselves in ways that may not be the same as a majority. But when it involves grammar school children and middle school children in their formative years and when most susceptible to influences, the parents should absolutely be involved. Even more important, what occurs in the home and not just in the school. Nothing is in the policy regarding this. This policy is so far-reaching, I ask what effort had been made to make it known to all the parents who are in the school district. As you all are aware, attendance at board meetings are sparse. Looking at the Board's website is probably even less sparse. I recommend that before further consideration that any effort be made to get the community involved with respect to this nine-page policy dealing with a significant subject that is touching all of our lives, not just the board members, not just this school system, but the community as a whole. And I don't, I know I haven't been at all your board meetings, but I don't, I'm not aware from talking with the people how much participation has gone into this by the community or by parents. So I'm not saying not adopt it, but I'm saying don't adopt it tonight. Get the parents involved in such a significant issue that is, that is impacting on our children. And I keep in mind, I have grandchildren. My kids are out of school, but I have grandchildren, this age group. And I'm very concerned, they're not in this school system, but I'm very concerned as to the impact on my grandchildren and the impact on my children who have to deal with the children being exposed to things without having an opportunity to voice their opinion. So I urge the Board to not vote on this policy tonight, but to get the community involved with such a policy statement. I do have another comment with respect to another policy. This will be a short one, though. And that's Policy 5330.04. And there's two things that brought, came to my attention with respect to this policy as opposed to the one I just talked about. This policy is drawing the distinction between high schools, right, the laws with the high school kids. And your policy is drawing the distinction between grammar school and middle school. But yet the policy before is a blanket policy that affects everyone. But here's another thing that attracted me to this policy. Nowhere in this policy are the parents involved. I question, how many other policies are there that this board has that excludes the parent? This policy says that if a child is overdosed, immediate action has to be taken to get them healthy, get them to the hospital. But nowhere in here says immediately contact the parents. Let them be aware what's going on with their child. How come we continually exclude parents from the educational process, such as things like this? And I'm very concerned about that. And like I said, I don't, I can't beat all thousand policies that you have, but how many other policies are there that don't involve the parent or exclude the parents? And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And there are some things that you've said that I want to be addressed here, here and now. Number one, and I'm not an attorney. I'm talking now, I tell you this difference between a policy and a regulation. So we also have regulations. So I'm addressing your concern dealing with 53053305, 533004, where you said it doesn't say contact parents. There is, the policy is the what? The regulation is the how. It's the procedures that operationalize the policy. So while you may not see any kind of contact parents in a policy, because that's not the what. It's, this is what we stand for. And the regulation, and you can find them all online, actually spell out the procedures in place to operationalize that. So that's a quick answer to that one. Actually, here it is. The principal or designated, and this deals with, say, policy, shall notify as soon as practical the parent of any student or family member or any or other contact person for a staff member who may be experiencing an opioid overdose or has been administered an opioid anecdote. I mean, it does, it happens throughout here, but it does appear in our regulations. So that's a quick answer to your second part. To the first part, I really would like to yield to our superintendent and our attorney, who I believe can speak to some of your concerns, not all. And I would encourage you to speak with our superintendent one-on-one as well.
In general, as you've noted, there are multiple policies. Certainly, this board, I think, is exceptional in regard to having a separate place on our website where we notify the community of what policy changes we're considering. Not only that, we make it very clear in terms of strikeouts and goals, what policy changes are being made. So I think if you make some comparisons to other districts, you'll see that in that way, we're very transparent. But certainly, some things let themselves be the input and some things do not. There are some rights that students have. We do, you asked, where do we get our advice? We utilize both our legal firm, who's here with us tonight, but we also utilize a policy research firm run by attorneys whose sole purpose is to look at policy, state regulation, federal regulation, and making sure that we're in accord. Particularly, policy that you spoke about received national attention a couple of years ago when it was adopted. It has continued to be refined. It's been scrutinized. But certainly, if we were to pose this to our community, we would not be in a position to disregard those regulations. But certainly, we are being transparent. The board process is here. People do take advantage of being here in person or watching our meetings online or looking at the information that we provide on the website. So those are all areas that, and I do need to say that by and large, as the board president has said, there are procedures that go along with all of this. So parents are not necessarily excluded from the process. As a matter of fact, I have to say, in all situations that apply to this policy, both here and in prior district that I was in, parents were involved throughout. But there are areas that we, if a certain situation arose where a student invoked confidentiality, then we would have to abide by that. So I understand your feelings on that, and I certainly understand that there are different perspectives. But I hope that answers some of your questions.
I'll be brief. I haven't reviewed the policy, however. The Board's primary responsibility is making policy. Majority of board policies are driven by state and federal law. They're driven to keep the board within the legal framework, if you will. So in fact, even with all due respect to the parents, I understand perfectly what you're saying. You mentioned concerns about parents being involved. You mentioned concerns about parents being involved in terms of the age and things like that, which I respect. But the reality is, the laws, the law, and what occurs with this service the district uses, which a number of our other clients use, is that they constantly send out updates and they're driven, they're driven by the laws. You wouldn't see any updates about what were changed in the law. So again, while I respect your concerns, the board doesn't really have a lot of choice when they have to adopt policies to guide the administration and the staff. They really don't have a lot of say in terms of policies of this nature, things which relate to constitutional law, First Amendment, discrimination, things of that nature. Certainly, they have say with regard to local policies relative to personnel, leave of absence, leave of absence, which are not covered by your labor, your labor agreements, transportation, residency, who's allowed to attend school, you know, if you're a resident, and when we accept kids who are, can kids stay in school? And if the parents move away and they have to break, they have to complete the school year? That's something which is more probably applicable to what you're talking about. Things like this transgender policy, they're driven by the laws. And I would, my guess is, this district's got a lot of updates in the last two or three months, because a lot of our other clients, your house estimate, who used to represent years ago, they're both attorneys. They probably, they're probably involved with 180 school districts in New Jersey, at least. So, but they're up to date. And now, showing my age, the biggest problem with boards of education going back way back was they never kept their policies up to date. Because policies are kind of like insurance policies, you never want to agree them. And that was, that was not very good. And I can tell you, the district I'm involved in now, where the superintendent would ask me questions and I'd say, "Look at the policy book", and the policy was 10 years old. So it doesn't work, but, so. In these times, the policies are up to date, they're following the federal law, they provide, I think, some very appropriate, good guidance for the administration. And certainly, the residents should have input. But on certain policies, even if you had the input, with all due respect, you couldn't change the policy. In fact, the transgender subject, if you will, probably five, six years ago, this was maybe seven, this was just coming into the scene and there was a lot of confusion. We saw with our, with our clients, how to handle this, how to handle the bathroom situation, how to handle the locker room situation. You have men, male, female bathrooms, and that nature. The good thing now is, there is guidance where the administration, particularly the building critical and the guidance folks, know what to do. And we see, I say that because we get a lot less questions in our office. Go back some over years, we've got them every day now. So there is a roadmap for them to follow, but again, and that is driven by laws. And you've got to follow the law and everything the parent may say privately. While there's anything concerned, it's not going to change it. That's all I have to say.
May I have another opportunity for comment, or am I out of line?
Not out of line, but let me ask, is anybody else out there who'd like, who'd like to address the board, to be fair? It's your lucky day. I will say to you, I was on policy for several years when this policy first came out. We struggled. Let me tell you something, the policy committee struggled for the same concerns that you're struggling. But when we are informed that you can't break the law, then we have no choice but to follow the law. And so that's what you see in this policy. But we struggled as parents, as teachers, we struggled also, but it was out of our hands.
I appreciate the comments. And I was on the Board of Education, my town, for many years, president of the board, well, extensively with the Morris County School Board Association, Jersey School Board Association. So I know what you're all going through. But you know something? In all these regulations and law, there is something that says that we don't blindly follow the dictates of others, that we have to stand by and question what's being done. Now, you mentioned that the regulations with respect to policy 5330.04 says that the parents will be contacted in the event of, but it's not stated in the policy. But policy 5756 specifically says that the parents are to be excluded and not be contacted. The policy specifically talks about the rights of the children. And you're talking five-years-old, 10-year-old children. Policies should vary based on the ages that are involved. You did this with this policy, 5330.04. But we're not doing it with respect to such a big issue as transgender. So I do have a lot more comments, but I'm over and I appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
I'll get back and talk to you some more about this at the next meeting. But I do hope that you reconsider this policy at this point in time. There's no rush to get it done tonight. Get the parents involved. Thank you.
Thank you. I will tell you that whenever possible, the policies are adapted to the age with we work. There are several policies that need to be adopted by the board that deal with high school. We, you know, certainly that doesn't, that doesn't really affect us. However, we try to pare everything down when it is high school. We have a whole thing on, I believe, sex education, that we actually start going through and saying, "No, this does not involve". But when, you know, we can argue all you want about when something's driven by law, what are your options? But thank you so much for your, thank you so much for your comments. Okay, may I have a motion to close to the public for policy? Mrs. Shields?
Second.
Mrs. Hellbord? Roll call, please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy? Yes, motion passes. Before we move to old business, I was remiss and I need to make a, and I'm almost embarrassed, I'll be, I'll admit this. I need to make a motion to reopen under personnel. Because when I asked for the motion, I said we were voting on items numbers one through 29. It's been brought to my attention that there was a 30. And we really beneficially never voted on number 30. So I'm not sure I'm going to ask for guidance here. Do we need to vote on the whole thing or just number 30 now as a separate? Just 30. Okay, may I have a motion, please, to open, to reopen personnel? Mrs. Mezak and Mrs. Cherico, to reopen personnel. Now may I have a motion, please, to vote on number 30, which is the contract for Mrs. Rachel DeCarlo, our business administrator. And I do apologize from the bottom of my heart, it was not intentional. Please, thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Second.
Mrs. Cherico. May I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy? Yes, motion passes. I'm so, so sorry, I'll have a with that now. Please, still work with me, it wasn't intentional. Moving on then to old business, does any board member have old business? I've already talked about the wonderful dedication. So moving on then to new business, does anyone have new business from the board? Mrs. Hellbord?
I attended the Special Education Symposium on, I think, May 13. And I'd like to just share a little bit about what I attended. The opening keynote speaker was, I can hopefully, I believe that's how you say his last name. And he's the father of a child that had passed in the Sandy Hook shooting a couple of years ago. And he is a father of a child who was autistic. And he's starting a program called Dylan's Change Foundation in his son's memory. And it's, it's, it's starting to spread throughout New Jersey. There is a lot of training that's going on through his foundation. He's recruiting actively through New Jersey, where he's working with schools to empower empathetic and courageous children to create strong inclusive communities. It was very touching to hear him speak, and as I can note, speaker that day. I also went to a few breakout sessions. One of them was discipline in special education classes. And it was an overview of the different laws that pertain specifically to specialized education students and discipline. I will pass along this to the administration. There was a nice presentation in PowerPoint, everything from the Parker McKegge company, legal company that did the presentation. And also, I went to a second breakout session, which was called Getting Effective Special Education and Transformation Approach. And really, the gist of this program, it's a company that helps districts make the transformation from going from a compliance to a more effective approach with special education. And with the updates with the new laws and different things that have passed in the court system, that is the focus where the state is headed. So it was, it was a very informative and very comprehensive program. And the last one that I went to was the New Jersey School Boards, one of their attorneys spoke, as well as the, I believe he was the chairperson for the Special Ed Committee for New Jersey School Boards. And basically, they were doing an overview of, Mr. Burges was the attorney from school boards, who went through the system as a child with special needs and talking about his journey and how there's been a huge transformation from when he started. He's quite a bit older than I am, and he started in a school district. And, you know, they were very accommodating, but it shouldn't happen by choice is what his whole message was. He was talking about where his science labs were on the second floor and he could walk up and downstairs and having to make those accommodations. And we've come a long way in special ed, you know, in the past few decades. And also, the chairperson just did an overview of special ed laws, things that we should be considering, talking about, looking at goals for the year regarding special ed. And I have notes that I'm more than willing to share, I have the documents. But that's the overview of, please.
Thank you. Anyone else new business?
I also have new business. I recently attended the New Jersey School Boards Association's School Security and Student Safety Conference on June 7th. So I just wanted to share a little bit of what was discussed and a little bit of what I learned. Initially, the keynote was presenting the pros and cons as well as the differences between the types of security personnel that are being currently deployed in New Jersey schools. We actually watched a video that was regarding Columbine, and it actually was called Echoes of Columbine, and it involved some monthly state police officers, which was very eye-opening, and they're using the information that's obtained from that to help inform and prevent similar occurrences from happening. One of the breakout sessions that I attended involved the legal threat assessments and pertains to policy and planning. It showed that the threat assessments and intervention that can be implemented can work. They also shared that they will do threat and vulnerability assessments by looking outside at the structure of the school and recommend solutions for that as well. We were also notified that there are risk mitigation specialists here in northern New Jersey that would be willing to help as well. Something else that was discussed is the statewide mapping initiative, just the one what the military uses to map out the schools. So it's set up as a grid where you're looking at a certain room and it may be like in A5. And it's very easy for all personnel, whether they're coming from another district, another town, to identify a location. And New Jersey has not yet adopted that threat assessment plan. But that is something that I guess that's going to be in the works for potentially in the future. I also attended a breakout session that was about practical considerations for effective school safety plans. And it dealt primarily with school funding and class three officers and how to work through those contracts as well, very informative. And then finally, something that I had very, very little information about previously was the consideration of using school as a shelter. And they went into why that might be something that the district may look into setting that up. I have follow-up presentations that were just sent to me recently, so I'll be forwarding all of that as well as sharing my notes that I just haven't had a chance to type.
Thank you. Anyone else new business? If not, I can open to the public if anyone has anything to say. May I have a motion, please, to open to the public? Mrs. Mezak, second, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Adams.
Brian Adams, RTDA. We'd just like to echo the sentiments of Mrs. Salmy and the board in regards to the renaming of the gym and the community award that we presented to Mr. Wexler. It was a very uplifting day and, you know, and on a side note, the kids, students now are calling Bassett Hall the Tim Gym.
I have to tell you, Mrs. Salmy, my son came home and goes, "Mom, it was really cool and everything, but you guys missed the mark." And I'm like, "What? You mean you missed the mark? The class is beautiful, it was fantastic", he goes, "The Tim Gym wears out."
Go figure.
I said, "Well, next time, we'll have a tree".
Well, but Bassett isn't the recognition of the name, so I'm going to, I'm still going to say that the kids can call it Tim Gym to be its basketball, so we'll leave it at that.
We can put another sign, AKA, Tim Gym.
There you go, there you go. That's next year's dedication. Thank you so much. I have a question about tomorrow's duck race. If it rains, what is the status of your duck race?
We're going to be wet.
The ducks will have more water than the goat.
Yes, we have, we have the inside pavilion of the Hybernia Fire Department. So we'll be able to eat and decorate the ducks and be able to wet. So where are your, where are your ducks?
Thank you, just wanted to get an update on the stats of that. So it is, it is at the Tri-County Fair, correct? That's where we're going, heading for the duck race. Thank you very much.
The percentage of the situation is decreasing during the day.
Oh, okay. We'll keep our fingers crossed. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, I'm at, yes, please, come on up.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Dworkin, eight-door main court. Just a quick comment, I'll keep comments. I know you all volunteer your time and it's very much appreciated and I want to thank you all. I just want to especially thank the three who are taking their time out of their very busy schedules, time away from their families to take these extra courses that are going to help our district and give you more information about how you can help our district more. So I really want to thank you guys very much. And just a quick thank you, my, all of my, to our DVO teachers who are here, my children go to DVO. So thank you for coming and you guys are great. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, if not, may I have a motion to close to the public? Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields? The board needs to return to executive session for personnel and superintendent evaluation. We will not be, we will be coming back out, but we'll not be making any decisions. There'll be no going taking place. So with that, may I have a motion to go on to exec? Mrs. Bassett, Mrs. Hellbord, thank you very much.